Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our April 5, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to remind everyone to please either turn off or mute your phones. If not, it could get expensive. You have to buy everybody in the room lunch. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Maritza, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maritza. Next is the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes?
Good morning. No, sir, there are no changes.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion then to approve the agenda as opposed and allow chair to deviate as necessary.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So we will go to call to the public. And the first speaker is Mr. Chaboya. Louis, good mornings. Good to see you, my friend.
Good morning. Name is Louis Chaboya. I'm with the Board of 2025 Committee and also representing the first responders of Santa Cruz County and Nogales Sonora. I'm sure most of you have been watching the news as far as the forecast of the fire dangers that are looking, we are looking at in southern Arizona. Some of you have already seen that we've had a few fires in southern Arizona. Thank goodness, not in Santa Cruz County yet. Yet. So that being said, I really, really urge you to consider hiring an emergency manager for the county. And I've talked to several first responders, like I said, from fire, law enforcement, both here in the U.S. and in Mexico. And, you know, they say there's been many tragic events over the past years in other places, thank goodness, where a lot of properties and lives has been lost. And I know funding is very important for the county, but the loss of your house or a relative or a friend, I think overwhelms that. Now Jeff has done a fantastic job in the, it's, uh, in the health department, and him and Ray did a fantastic job with the clinic. But as interim director for emergency management, so Veda is overwhelmed. So I really urge you to do, you know, for the sake of our county, to please, please consider hiring an emergency manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. It's good to see you, my friend. Anyone else in the audience under call to the public? Because I, oh, did you turn a slip in?
I was in contact with Alma.
So what is your name, ma'am?
Maggie Ergo.
Maggie, you're here. Come up to the podium, please.
Actually, may I pass these out to you?
Yeah.
This is a more extensive version of what I'm going to say. And the reason I'm here today at this time is in relationship to the executive session that you're having with the lawyers about the proposed donation of a park to the county by AMI. I have extreme concerns about this, and it has to do with the road. I believe everyone really cares about the road. And I would like you to, if possible, discuss with the lawyers, what will the designation of this road be? Is it a mine haul road? Or is it, as it says on page two of the AMI agreement, a local rural road? The reason I think this designation is extremely important, important to the health of all the people who live in the surrounding area, is that the regulations for a mine haul road may well be very different than the regulations for a local rural road, particularly related to particulates. How much dust is going to be generated? If you look at the back of this little handy dandy thing I pointed out here, this is a picture of a single mine truck on the road. The level of dust on a dirt road that a mine truck can generate is astounding. This road is not like the mines six miles from Patagonia. It's very close to Patagonia. If trucks are running up and down there 24/7, the amount of dust that's going to potentially come into Patagonia could seriously affect the health of the people of Patagonia. And I'm particularly worried about the children because children are much more vulnerable when it comes to air pollution, water pollution, all of that than us grayheads. So I would really implore you to thoroughly vet this question because it appears if you sign this contract, you are formally designating this as a local rural road and not a mine haul road. The mine haul road would be regulated along with the mine by the same regulatory bodies and fall under the same regulatory requirements, rules and regulations, as the mine itself, whereas a local rural road, who know, I don't know what that is. I also have copies of this, if there are any journalists who want to look into this or other lawyers or what have you. And the other thing I want to point out in the contract, because I used to work with lawyers dealing with contracts, is that the language on page B2, B3, and it relates to this under E, use the road improvements in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations relating to.
Thank you, Ms. Ergo. Your three minutes have expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Since you have it there, we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you. Anyone else in the public here? If not, I'm going to go to Zoom world. Is it Chris Dollahan? Are you on there?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Chris Dollahan. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the road, but I'm talking about, instead of the actual road through the park, I'm talking about the, some information about the impacts on routes 82 and 83, to which this road will connect. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing my screen because the timer is so large. In 2003, not 2002, as I had a typo in my statement, the ADOT designated this 80, Route 82-83, as scenic highway and stated a number of objectives for these roads. And I've, I'm curious whether the designation or the change in large semi and wide load vehicles onto routes 82 and 83 isn't in direct contradiction to goal number four, which in the context of promoting quiet tourism on the scenic road. Goal number four, objective number two is to reduce the number of through semi truck and wide load, wide loads traveling on this scenic road. I'm not sure. I also wanted to note that Route 83 passes into Pima County. So I'm also curious whether or not the Pima County supervisors or local administrators are in support of the large number of, the increase in semi trucks and other truck traffic that will be traveling route, routes 82 and 83, which, as I'm sure you know, are single lane, lane roads with limited passing possibilities. Some sections of them are extremely hilly and curvy with terrible or non-existent sightlines. There's an increase in pedestrian or bicyclists using these roads, as was intended with designating these roads as scenic highways. So it seems to me that we're putting at risk both a designation or the attempt to promote quiet tourism in the county as well as increasing potential harm to travelers, cyclists and other travelers on this road. Even a back-of-the-envelope calculation suggests that the additional traffic will amount to more than 4 million miles traveled per year on routes 82 and 83. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Dollahan. Anyone else called to the public on Zoom world? Please raise your hand. I think most of the other people want to talk after or during the study session. See anybody on there, raise their hand. Let's move on then to current events. One, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Brecker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. Good morning. I want to acknowledge that this last week, the Arizona wine tastings happened in the article in the Arizona Republic. They, a lot of wine growers throughout the state actually acknowledged the contribution that Kent Calligan has made to the wine industry in Arizona, not just in the Sonoyta area, but also in northern Arizona. And his vineyard actually won a couple of gold medals for their wines. Also, winning medals were Dos Cabezas, Todd and Kelly Bostock, and Rune Winery, and that's James Callahan, not Calligan, which I always get mixed up because of the old westerns. But at any rate, congratulations to the work that they're doing out there in the East County. Kudos. Council, Council Beedabach convened a couple of meetings. One of them was a binational rail meeting with the government of Nogal, of Sonora. They've been working on a project to try to move the railway through, out of the town. And also she convened a binational water meeting, and that was really to deal with the floodwater. And so we're hoping at this stage that that is going to get broken down into smaller working groups. There's a lot to learn about how both governments work and who controls what in each entity. So hoping that we build something that is sustainable through different leaderships at the Council General's office. And finally, Glenn Williamson, who is, used to work as an unofficial person with the Canadian Government, is now working with another group called Canada Invest in Arizona, and he came down into Santa Cruz County to look for opportunities for Canadian investment in this community. So, Mr. Chairman, I survive St. Patrick's Day, and so all is good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Brecker. Supervisor Malera.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I first and foremost want to thank staff for putting together last week's study session. I thought it was, it was filled with good dialogue and also organizing today's study session as well. Yesterday, I had the privilege of sitting in on a Zoom meeting with CSA where they voiced major concerns with the state legislature. And the key to this is that the state is starting to really squeeze counties, especially small counties. You know, they're, they're looking at increasing ALTEX, $112,000 more for us, I believe, and our county manager can add to that in a little bit. Also, there's judicial salary increases and, along with two tax, property tax bills that are out there that can really hurt Santa Cruz County. One is SB 1093, which decreases assessment from 15, from 16 to 15%, I believe. And the other one is HB 2822, eliminating property taxes on business, personal property. So CSA has put together a letter, which we're going to get to our legislators, and this later, this letter is our proposal from CSA for mitigation for some of these increases that will really hurt our small counties. And Jennifer, if you may, when it comes to your turn, you can go ahead and add your two cents to it if you want. But that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Malera. And, you know, it's funny that the state has a tremendous surplus of funds squirreled away, but yet they continue to pass on cost to our communities. And usually, the most affected ones, as Supervisor Malera stated, are the small counties. We don't have, you know, sometimes we're running on very tight budgets, and then they want to increase everything. And I think it's important that we continue to advocate for the taxpayers of Santa Cruz County. It's not fair if the state has the money, let them pay for it. They can take over the courts, and they can pay for it. And some of these other deals, they don't understand, or maybe they do, but they don't know how it affects every citizen here in Santa Cruz County when they make some of these changes. So at the end of the day, as a board, we'll be vigilant to try to protect the interest of our taxpayers and try to ward off some of these bad legislative ideas that the people in Phoenix get that think it's going to make everything better for everyone, and it's not the case. So anyway, that concludes my report. I'll go to the managers' report. Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning again. Over the last two weeks, I've attended CSA small counties and Board of Directors meetings. I met with the Friends of the Presidio at Supervisor Malera's request, as well as the boards regarding the state parks. I met with the city on flood control issues, had a virtual meeting with Senator Kelly regarding the congressional direct spending request that has come out. And as Supervisor Malera reported, we met yesterday with CSA on these budget costs. So between the budget costs and the reduction in revenue, Santa Cruz County alone is looking at, right at $900,000 hit to our budget next year. On those cost increases each year, as well as the revenue reduction will increase, and that's a cumulative amount. So as, as you all have mentioned, that is a pretty big hit on Santa Cruz County's budget. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I was at that meeting also with the city. We're really concerned with the flood channel right there across from Ron Turley Park and the Ho-Hokum Public Works. I mean, the scouring that's going on, on those banks. And so staff prepared a presentation on, you know, next steps. So I want to thank Jesus and, and was it Ernie? And Leonard for sitting in and talking to Councilman Bonilla and Maldonado that came to our meeting. So, okay, let's move on to item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash, Investment, Expenditure, and Revenue Reports. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $16,830,259, with an investment amount of just a little, just a little bit over $10 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,781,243, with an investment amount of $815,000. The flood control district fund has an overall balance of $969,025, with an investment amount of $512,000. The jail district fund has an overall balance of $2,793,036, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance, $41,314,245, with an investment amount of $14,435,000. For an estimated end of the month balance of $12,907, $907,083.
Gentlemen, any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mauricio.
Yes, sir.
At this time, Chair, entertain a motion to recess and convene into the flood control district.
So moved.
Second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now in the flood control district. Item one is Director Project Report. Angie, good morning.
Good morning, anyone. As you've seen in the report, as far as the Effort Canyon, I know we had a big, right after the last board meeting, a big award notice. However, been advised by ADM, that was a pretty, a little bit preempted, as you noted on my report, and that we're waiting to hear back from ADM to give us the, exactly what it is that they need to get that process going.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's like the most important part of this report. If you guys have any questions on any of the other details, has it been submitted?
Gentlemen, any questions of Ms. Pimienta?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Great. So, any report from the city of Nogales?
No.
Town of Patagonia?
No.
We'll open it up for public comment. Any issues or comments on the flood control district? See no one rushing up to the podium? Thank you, Angie. At this time, Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn our flood control district and reconvene into regular session.
So moved.
Fair second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now reconvene into it. So we'll go on to item H, Action Items. Item one, Discussion, Possible Action to Authorize, to Fill Building Inspector Position, Be a Vacant Appraiser Position, and See an Appraiser Assistant Position. They're all budgeted for, Madam Manager. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and the positions can be filled. Item two, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization, to Reclassify and Fill the Vacant Animal Shelter, a Tenant Position to Animal Care and Control Officer in the Animal Control Department. Everything good, Sonia? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve FFY 18 Operation Stone Garden OPSG Grant Program Award Relocation with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Subrecipient Agreement Number 180432-04OPSG Equipment in the Amount of $8,000. Everything in order? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Corrected Fill the Gap Grant Application for Fiscal Year 2022 Approved on 3/15/2022. And what is the correction on? Do you know? Is it okay?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I know that the courts had called me and just let me know that it was going to be on the agenda.
Okay. So if it's a correction, that's probably not a big issue. I don't see anyone from the courts here. So we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously unless you wrote a note.
No.
Okay. I didn't hear your aye. Anyway, item five, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Grant Agreement Renewals with First Things First for State Fiscal Year 23 SFY 23 to allow, and allow school superintendent to execute. And it is A, Grant Number GRA-RC020-21-1080-01, Year Three, for Capacity Building in the Amount of $10,000. And B, Grant Number FTFRC020-19-0640-02WIFI for Home Visitations in the Amount of $186,000. Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, Discussion, Possible Action to Prevent or Governmental Agreement with Pinal County School Superintendent for the Juvenile Detention Center Education Program, Hope School from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Everything in order? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
No, second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Juvenile and Adult Detention, Ray of Light Academy Secure Care Special Education Policies and Procedures, 2021, for the Board Approval Certification of School Year 2021 through 2022. Everything good to go? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Intergovernmental Agreement Contract Number CTR059269 with the Arizona Department of Health Services for COVID-19 ELC Funding for K-12 School Reopening from May 1, 2021 through May 31, 2022, in the Amount of $789,442. Everything in order? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
No, second.
Second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Job Order Master Agreement Number PW-FY2022 Renewal for Roadway Traffic Signals, Drainage and Drainage Structures, Solid Waste and Related Facility Maintenance Services with the Qualified Contractor, the Ashton Company, Inc., Enova Engineering LLC, K E and G, Rumel Construction, Inc., is it Sierra Mining and Ranching Company? Everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Do I hear a second?
A second. Can the discussion can?
What do you need?
Mr. Chair, member of the board.
So this is our, part of our JLC contract, which is job order contracting. Last year, we qualified five consultants. The rules are that we could direct select them unless, if, if the project's under $100,000. And if it's over $100,000, we could have them compete within that, those five consultants, and the limit is $1 million as of now. This is, we had, this is our first renewal. We have the opportunity to renew it three more times after this time, if you guys approve it.
Great. Any questions, officers?
Thank you very much. No questions. Great, great job doing that.
Thank you. Hey, did we vote on it? No. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Proclamations Declaring A, April 2022 is National County Government Month, and B, April 10 through the 16, 2022 is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. Everything in order? Chair, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2022-02 to Define Election Precinct Boundaries Within Santa Cruz County and Re-Adopting Supervisory, Supervisory Role and Community College District Boundaries. Alma?
Yes, sir. Everything is in order. I do want to provide a comment. I just wanted to thank staff and everyone involved in the redistricting and, as well as the Recorder's Office, who also collaborated very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Chair, entertain a motion. Yes.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Suzie. Good morning. It's good to see you. The Honorable Susanna Sines.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you also, too.
Morning, Suzie.
Good morning.
Morning, Suzie.
Good morning. It's good to see the Honorable Susanna Sines.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you also too. And I just also, I just wanted to extend almost thanks to the staff for the redistricting of the maps for the supervisory districts and new precinct boundary lines, and Alma was involved, and Jeanette, and I hope I don't miss anybody, but I wanted to thank your department, Jeanette, and Mr. Beaver, Bill Beaver too, was involved, as well as my staff, Victor and Victor Avialobos and Edu Covarubias. And there, and I think it was a great teamwork that they did to make this successful, and I just wanted to thank them and say them public. Thank you very much. And also, I'd like to just give you some information if more, I'd like you to pass this to the Board of Supervisors and the district changes that were made and some of the names that were involved and, and their parties, and how many were in those districts.
Great.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Suzie.
You're welcome.
So there's a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, under discussion. I'd just like to let you know that there has, there was no comment input.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And under discussion, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Alma, Suzie, all the staff, everyone involved for their due diligence.
Any other discussion? Great. Thank you, staff. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and so ordered. Thank you, Alma. We'll go on to item twelve, discussion, possible action, recommendation for, of approval of application for liquor licenses for A, Ranch House Tavern, Sonoyta, and B, the Italian Peasant Toubac. Well, okay. Okay, so usually what we have on the agenda is for the supervisors to do. I'm going to allow this one time. So Ms. Kay, if you can come up, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for seeing me. I misunderstood and thought, called the public source for things that were not actually on the agenda. I, I was approached by Mr. Gremlin not long ago, and he told me, Anita, I will take it personally if you fight my liquor license. And I want to say first off that I'm not fighting Chris Gremlin personally. I am once again reiterating to you guys that there is way too much alcohol flowing in Sonoyta without the road improvements, without the lodging, without the transportation for public to use. Now, this liquor license goes to throw in yet more hard alcohol and alcohol to go into the Sonoyta area with no additional food, which, I mean, as restaurant owner, you'd think that I would be saying, oh, I don't want more food and alcohol, but I'm more uncomfortable with alcohol without food coming in. So even though it would be more competition to me if it was. I want to reiterate that in the Mountain Empire being Patagonia and Sonoyta already has one-third of the Class Six liquor licenses with less than ten percent of the population. That's without this next one coming in. There are over eighteen wineries. If you go for all the liquor licenses in the San, in the eastern Santa Cruz area, not including Patagonia, you are going up on thirty-three liquor licenses, thirty-three liquor licenses for under two thousand residents. Do the math, people. That is, that is eighty people for every winery. I'm not disagreeing with making that the handbasket of sin with two more possible tasting rooms coming in on eighty-three and talks of a dispensary. If, if that's what you guys want to do, great, but can you get your community development people on bringing us a motel? Can we put some bike paths in so there's not a group of bicyclists riding around drunk with horse trailers and, and residents trying to maneuver around them? It's insanity. There are more places to buy alcohol on the main drag than there are all the other businesses of all kinds combined at this point. It's a lot of alcohol, and I understand you guys want to grow that as the alcohol wine tourist area. I'm all in. I benefit from that as well, but we need to look at the whole picture here, not just selling us out, but selling us as what we can be, investing us as the tourism, bringing us more things we need. We need lodging. We need low-end housing so that we can support the employees to run these businesses as well. Please invest in us instead of just selling us out as where to get trashed in Santa Booze County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Okay, so at this time, of course, it's discussion approval of applications of liquor license, and I will say this, just because we approve or don't approve, the ultimate decision is the Liquor, Liquor Board of the State of Arizona. So I would recommend that you reach out to them as well to file your, your opposition to what's going on, I mean. So Chair will entertain a motion one way or another. Yes, everything in order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Also, I do want to advise that we do post a notice, and it was noted, it was posted back in February so that public would be able to input comment. But everything is in order, Mr. Chairman, and there was no other comments provided for these two both liquor licenses. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what Chairman Reese said, is that what the board is approving right now is a recommendation to the Arizona State Liquor Board, which I have to tell you rarely listens to us, either in the positive or the negative. So I think it is an important step that we do take, and, and so we are, this is what we do.
And believe it or not, I'm going to agree with you, Ms. Kay. I think that there are too many bars out there already. And you know, as a society, I know that it's, I know the pandemic has been hard, but you're right, if there's no place for them to park their car and, and go into the establishment of their choice, there's a lot of danger, and that does, not just the public, but also our public safety officers that are out there that, you know, could not all of a sudden have someone come out there, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need to separate these as A and B then.
So.
I'll vote on each one.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll go back, and if you can restate your motion, we'll go with the first one, A.
I'll rescind my initial.
Okay.
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move to approve, up, up. Not approve the Ranch House Tavern. Do I hear a second? Okay, then somebody stated motion.
Move to approve, item A.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we'll do a rock, roll call vote. Supervisor Maleta?
Aye.
Chair votes nay, and Supervisor Brecker?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries two to one. Item B, the Italian peasant. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the liquor license for the Italian peasant.
Aye, we'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Okay, item thirteen, discussion, possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrants A through D. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen, tax valuations, A through K.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fifteen, approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, all, the minutes were signed off by all three. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Demands Supervisor Maleta?
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling one million four hundred and three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, of which five hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents are from the general fund.
Okay.
I'll second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We compare bills, and we can keep the lights on another month. Item seventeen is associated with a public hearing, so at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into the public hearing. And that is for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh one, regulating contact between wildlife and humans within Santa Cruz County in an effort to protect the welfare and safety of the public. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convened into the public hearing. Are you going to take this one, Jose?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, Jose.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I stated back in the, my letter for the recommendation to pass this ordinance. Reasons why is, there's two main reasons. Human and wildlife contact. This is for the safety of the public. Not only can they get bitten, they become a nuisance also for, you know, neighbors and just general area.
I think the mic is off, right?
Is it? Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Secondly, you know, the health issue, you know, javelinas carry rabies, and by this, you know, we're protecting the public. It's very important. We get a lot of people that are feeding now wildlife, and that's not recommended by gaming fish, us, and it should not be, you know. This will discourage the public from feeding wildlife, and, and it's just going to help, you know, for the safety and the health of the citizens of Santa Cruz County.
So we'll open it up for any public comment? And not everybody at once? Okay. Gentlemen, any comments or questions?
Is this reg, is this being adopted statewide as well?
No.
There is a state law pertaining to this, but it doesn't affect towns or cities. I think the population is a hundred and fifty thousand? Two hundred thousand?
No, only affects two counties.
Yeah, it's Pima and
Maricopa.
And Maricopa. So the rest of the counties do not have anything that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, thank you, Jose. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convened into regular session. Item seventeen. Discussion, possible action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two oh one, regulating contact between wildlife and humans within Santa Cruz County in an effort to protect the welfare and safety of the public. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think this is a really important ordinance. This is something that we had a choice of either going to the, to the state legislature and trying to get this adopted for all the rural, thirteen rural counties, or taking responsibility of protecting our constituents. And so I'd like to thank the attorneys. I'd like to thank Jose and his department for working together. I mean, this is not an easy thing to write and pull together to make sure everything, all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, but I think we got a good ordinance here, so. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
If not, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and the ordinance is adopted. We will take a sixteen-minute break before we come back and go into our study session. So we're in recent, our regular session, and Chair will entertain a motion to convene into the study session.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay, folks, so as I stated at our last study session, you each have three minutes. Please note cheering or cheering. Be respectful of each other's comments. We want to listen to you today. I will not read any chat comments. If people on the chat there want to state something, they can raise their hands, and they can speak for themselves. I'm not going to do that anymore. That's the, you all came and you all made it a, a point to be here in person and talk, and I don't think it's fair to those that spoke, that we read their chats into the comments, so they will not be allowed. If you want to, raise your hand. The other thing, all of you in Zoom land, please keep your microphones muted. If you are going to talk, raise your hand. We have Ms. Jones monitoring, and she will give me the names of people on the Zoom meeting that want to comment. So with that, we will go ahead, and I will start with all the slips that have been handed to me from the people here in the, in the meeting. And then I will go to those on the Zoom meeting. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We're going to do a presentation first. Thank you for reminding me. Well.
You're welcome, Chairman Reese.
So Jennifer?
Yes, sir. Thank you. If I could just kick it off here really quick, and there may be some people that weren't here yesterday, so I just want to thank everybody, or I'm sorry, yesterday, last week. I just want to thank everybody for being here at our April fifth study session. We held a study session on this topic last week, and today we hope to clarify some of the issues and questions that came up at the last study session. For those of you not in attendance, I want to summarize the proposed agreement. AMI is proposing to dedicate one hundred and thirty-four acres of privately owned land to the county for the purpose of a public park. As part of the proposed land dedication, AMI is reserving an easement on the land they are dedicating for the purpose of building a temporary road. The county is not granting an easement for the temporary road to cross any property currently owned by the county. AMI's road will connect to existing rights of ways. We have included a more detailed map to our agenda backup to show these connections. The county and AMI will seek public input for the design of the park. However, the design, construction, and continued maintenance will be paid by AMI. We believe this park can be designated and developed in such a manner as to promote recreational opportunities, facilitate land preservation, and enhance drainage protection. I would now like to introduce our two presenters, Melanie Lawson, Community Specialist from South Thirty-two, who will be presenting first, and Rob Lane, a consultant for the county that works as our project manager within our Public Works Department. We will take input and questions following the end of the entire presentation. Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you, Melanie.
All right, good morning. Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, Supervisors, and County Staff. Thank you again for your time today as we continue discussion on the land agreement and proposed route. As Jennifer mentioned, my name is Melanie Lawson. I'm the Community Specialist for South Thirty-two. So following up to the information that we shared last week, I wanted to share some route development milestone dates to give an idea of the timeline. I also want to provide assurance that we will not permanently damage utilities during construction of the road. In all construction projects, utilities are identified and can either be moved or protected. We will not leave Red Rock Acres residents without access to water that they're currently getting from their well. That's not acceptable. So the eighteen to twenty-four month timeframe that we previously stated is the timeframe for the entire project, including identifying and moving utilities, the actual construction, there's some contingency time in there, and then also construction cleanup. So what's listed here are the approximate milestone dates, April through October twenty twenty-two. We can begin staking and flagging the utilities in the area, and we can finalize utility relocation plans. So as we discussed last week, we can relocate the gas line, and we know the approximate locations of the water lines for the Red Rock Acres HOA well. And again, we can move them or protect them in place. October through December twenty twenty-two, we can begin to relocate and protect the utility lines. By then, we will also have final designs, and we can put the project out to bid. We can include some park features at this time pending the results of public input process, but those can also occur outside of this milestone schedule. In January of twenty twenty-three, that's the proposed date to begin construction. The road construction would hopefully be completed by early twenty twenty-four, and then the road would be available for use for our construction-related traffic. And just a reminder, I presented some of the activities last week, but the construction activities during this time onsite are the second water treatment plant, which has already begun, and the additional site infrastructure will be constructed from mid twenty twenty- twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-six. And a reminder, the target production date is fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. There were also a lot of questions last week about an end date, and I did discuss it a bit last meeting, and what's written into the agreement and what we intend to do is to stop using the road after hopefully receiving authorization to improve and use Flux Canyon. This slide is the, the time, this slide and the timeline discussion are helped to answer the question, why, why now? Um, and also, if the agreement is accepted, we can continue discussions with the county on things Jennifer mentioned, like drainage protection or flood protection and other opportunities in the park area. So as we discussed a little bit last week, in twenty-twenty, before the company extended the timeline for the study, we had one solution which we proposed, and that was a paved permanent road connecting Harshaw to State Route eighty-two. The previous design included twelve-foot travel lanes, five-foot shoulders, and it was a hundred-foot right-of-way because it was intended as a public road, and it was intended as a permanent route for the project. There were also three permanent bridge crossings. Again, that's not what's proposed. Go ahead. So as we noted last week, we engaged the public, we got feedback on that previous design, and what we've done now is adjusted the plan and changed the design significantly incorporating the public input, and we're proposing a temporary design. There's less earthwork, the road more closely follows the natural contour of the area, the travel lanes are still twelve-foot wide with two-to-three-foot shoulders with a non-exclusive easement to ultimately build a thirty-foot wide road, including some drainage and slope improvements. The road will be a minor collector similar to a residential road, meaning it's not intended to be a main public thoroughfare, but those in the area who currently use the road for access will still have access to their property, and the road can also serve as secondary all-weather access for neighbors in the area while the road's in use. There will not be permanent bridges. Instead, there will be a dip section for one of the wa, wash crossings, and there will be a temporary bridge, which is more commonly referred to as a Bailey Bridge, for the second wash crossing. Lastly, as we've discussed, the road will not be paved, but instead be a stabilized base that will control dust. It'll be similar to the section of Harshaw Road that's close to the Hermosa site. So these pictures here at the bottom are of Harshaw Road. Some sections of Harshaw are chip sealed, those are the two outside pictures here, but they have a soil cement base underneath, and what we're proposing has a more natural look like the center picture, and we're not proposing to chip seal. So in closing, approving the agreement allows us to stay within the milestone schedule that was presented and the overall project development schedule that I presented during last week's study session. This proposal also upholds our commitment for long-term recreation or open space dedication for the area, and we'll continue to work with the county and the community on opportunities for the space, whether they're related to the park, buffer space, or some of the ideas that Jennifer presented again, like drainage protection and flood protection. We're continuing traffic studies and updating the traffic studies that we've currently done, and we'll kick off a public engagement process upon approval, and we'll work with Santa Cruz County and ADOT to comply with all requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Who's Rod?
Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, members of the board-
Or-
...and attendees. My name is Rob Lane. I'm a senior engineer with Solis Engineering Company, under contract with Santa Cruz County as a project engineer. This morning, I wanted to clear up some of the questions from last week's study session and clarify, um, some items that were existing around the timing of the, uh, cooperative agreement. One of the questions that came up was can AMI proceed with building the road without the counties owning the land, without the county owning the land? The answer is yes. They can. They would be subject to county permitting, which includes a floodplain use permit for the crossing at Sonoyata Creek, and a right-of-way use permit for the connection at Old Harshaw What's the county lose out on without the cooperative agreement? That have no land dedicated for park conversation, conservation, flood protection, or buffer They would lose a seat at the table to the planning and design of facilities which suit the needs of the county and mitigate the impacts. Acceptance of this agreement does not preclude or exclude the need for AMI to get permits. What, either way, they'll have to get permits. Next slide. Also, the county's not granting an easement. AMI is reserving their existing property rights to use the area as a road. Why now? So the planning process can begin with the county's involvement. It'd be a partnership, there are mutual assurances, and we can include public processes. Again, will AMI be exempt from permitting if the cooperative agreement is accepted? No. All permitting is the same. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention on the flood protection, there's currently out a, an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, and we receive, or the county receives statements of qualification. We're in the process of choosing a consultant for the Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project This land helps the county by mitigating flood impacts and any design that comes out of this feasibility study. Next slide, please. So I've talked about permitting. What does the permitting include? Again, it reserves a temporary non-exclusive easement via a deed restriction to plan, design, construct, maintain, and use a low-level rural road. Rural in this case means no curbing. That, that's the general distinction, uh, that engineers put on roads between rural and urban is curbing. In this case, that'd also be the material. They're not proposing pavement, they're proposing a stabilized base. What is a right-of-way use permit? Right-of-way use permit ensures access is constructed to the county standards. It ensures the contractor has traffic control plans and is meeting the county standards for connection to the public roadway or public right-of-way. What is the floodplain use permit? This permit evaluates the proposed work and ensures that proposed construction within the floodplain has no impact on adjacent properties. That, that means anything that's built in the floodplain meets the requirements. I think that was it. Next slide. Thank you very much.
So, just a second. Go ahead, Melanie. And then there's a question out in the audience.
Okay, I just wanted to add quickly, there was a lot of discussion last week about the letter, so we did provide responses to the letter. I emailed it to those on the letter that I had email addresses for last night. We posted a copy of the response to our website on the Hermosa documents page, and then we're sharing a copy with the county as well.
Thank you. So, you have to come up, please, so, and state your name of the question.
Get your mic ready. This is a question for Rob. Um, you, you, um, mentioned, my name is Lynn Davison. Live in Patagonia, um, and, uh, am, um, interested in your definition of low volume. You, you explained rural, you didn't explain low-volume road. Thank you.
Typically, sorry, typically low volume is under five hundred vehicles per day. That is a low-volume rate. Forest service roads are usually low-volume in the three to five hundred range.
She's got the podium, and then Kurt, if you wanna ask something, you can come up.
I have a question for the AMI resident, um, representative.
Please state your name.
Yes.
My name is Maggie Ergo, I'm from Patagonia. Will this be considered a mine haul road and regulated as such?
Are you meaning like, uh, regulated by MSHA, the Mine Safety and Health Administration?
Yes.
No, it will not. It's, it's not part of the mine site. The Mine Safety and Health Administration has authority over the Hermosa project site. This will not be included in that.
And would there be a difference if this land actually belonged to AMI and AMI built the road? That would then constitute a mine haul road, correct?
I don't believe so. I would have to go double-check, but I do not believe so. It wouldn't be part of the mine operating site.
But it is primarily for the mine to haul stuff, correct? That is the reason and purpose. There is no other purpose. The fact that people can occasionally use it, this is part of the mine. If this proposal does not go through, is that correct?
No. It would, our, the mine site is currently regulated by MSHA. It's very controlled access. Um, there's a badging system, it's not open to the public. That's not what the intent is for this road.
What about title, um-
Yeah. If you could speed it up, cause there's other people there. Ask your, your next question.
Okay, I can give you this, and I would like you to respond to the questions in this, and a lot of it relates to this question of mine haul road.
Okay.
And its regulation, and who permits it, who regulates it, and who has authority over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
I'm gonna wait for the, I'm just concerned this is coming out of our allotted time.
Kurt, no, it's not. If this is, you're asking a question, I'm not gonna take it from your allotted time, and don't start the timer.
You, you clarified it for me. You're not taking it from our input.
No, no, just if you have a question, go ahead. Yeah, it's not, I'm gonna do that. If you have a question, come up, and then you're next, ma'am.
Uh, my question is, um, I don't remember your name.
Please.
Vanessa Register? My question is about the, um, low-volume road. ADOT defines low-volume road as four hundred or less vehicles, just so you know. So, and my other question is, this is considered an undedicated low-volume road. Undedicated means anybody else can use it. Is that correct?
Rob, does that, what you said, please?
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the term "undedicated."
It's in your, it's in your MOU.
In our MOU?
Okay.
That would be, uh, okay. Can't, any comment?
I can't get to the right question.
Okay.
So, so that's my concern, is, is "undedicated" isn't defined, and "undedicated" means in ADOT that anybody can access it, including other mines, which means we can't have a traffic study on just one mine.
So, um, Jennifer, do you have an answer for that? As an undedicated road?
No, sir, I don't, but I've written down the question and I can get back to Mrs. Register.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, come up and, uh, oh, I'm sorry, you are next, ma'am, please. I apologize.
Thank you.
And identify yourself, please.
I'm Cat Crockett, and, uh, from Elgin. And, Mr. Lane, I have a question about something I saw on the slide but didn't really understand, and it pertained to the county having a seat at the table? Or maybe that was Melanie, I'm not sure which one. Could you explain that again?
Um, right now, the county's ability to interact with the mine beyond the MOU is, with this site in particular, is permitting-related. With the dedication or with the donation agreement being accepted, cooperative agreement being accepted, that gives the county the ability to develop this land as a park, as trailways, as open space, as flood protection. It becomes their property.
So essentially, what you're saying is, just in regard to the park, everything else such as the permitting would be the same regardless of the decision. Thank you.
Sir, and then you, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Greg Gordon, and I live on Thirty-One Cross Creek Road. Um, my question is regarding the construction of the road. No mention has been made, as far as I know, about what would be done to restore the landscape that is damaged inevitably by the heavy equipment that will be involved in building this road. At the moment, there's a nice ground cover, it's, it's covered with grass, it's, uh, you know, there's shrubs, mesquite trees, uh, so there's minimal, um, mud created during rain on that site. So I'm concerned about how the land is going to be restored after the road is built, and who is gonna pay for that? And how will that be followed over time so that if this, if the county does accept the park, and it turns out that those, uh, restorations, those flood control measures, et cetera, did not, uh, work properly, uh, were not acceptable, what's gonna happen? Who's, again, is gonna pay for that? Thank you.
Can I answer that, Melanie?
Yes, so a couple of things. We, with the temporary design, the intent is to not disturb as much, uh, land during construction. Um, after construction, we can work with the county, and again, it's that public process on incorporating park features or things, uh, replanting vegetation. Um, and then part of the design will also include sloping and drainage so that we're not impacting, uh, residents in the area with any disturbed drainage. Um, South Thirty-Two will pay for the cost of the road, they will also pay for long-term maintenance of the park.
Great. Ma'am, and then, and then-
Robin Coolibert, Robin Coolibert, Patagonia. Um, question about liability. What kind of liability is the county taking on by accepting this donation, both in the road and in the park? Mr. Lane, I guess, would be the one to ask. Or, or Melanie, whoever.
I, I just need to take that one under advisement and get back to, so we have all of her information on a speaker slip somewhere?
Pardon?
Do we have all of your information on a speaker slip somewhere? Yes.
So we don't, we, the county doesn't know, the public doesn't know yet what the liability burden would be if we took on this project? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's, it's not, but I think because our attorney can't give legal advice during this one, we will probably get whatever information necessary and let you know what the liability would be.
Okay.
If any.
Second question is, um, so if the, basically, you're saying, you know, um, this is, the park is an assurance that the area won't be developed, is that then implying that we, that AMI can't be trusted not to build on this property if we don't take this?
I, I would hope that we can be trusted. I think the intent here was, without that third-party assurance, there were questions, well, how can we be assured that you won't build on the property? Um, we've made a commitment to an exclusion zone, is kind of what we've called it. Um, so within a certain radius around Patagonia, we will not put any industrial infrastructure, we won't put warehouses, um, anything like that near the town of Patagonia. The only exception to that is what's already existing, the park and ride on Harshaw Road. Um, but when we proposed that, there were community questions, well, how can we be assured that you won't put anything like that along the road, and how can we just take your word for it? So that was some of the intent behind this agreement, is that there is some third-party assurance now, the county can provide that assurance.
And does that also apply to the tree of life, former Tree of Life property?
On Harshaw Road, the parcel north? So for that, uh, property, we're actually working right now with the Eastern Santa Cruz County Food Bank to remodel the former dormitory building.
Talking about the, okay, I'm talking about the south part of that.
On the south side, on the Mesa side?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, so you're wondering if that's included in the exclusion zone?
No, that, if that's included in the, will not develop.
Correct. That's included in, in our exclusion zone around Patagonia, yes.
Okay, cause I don't think it's part of the-
It's not included in this agreement. That's, um, that separate commitment I was talking about, just our own South Thirty-Two commitment. That's, um, that separate commitment I was talking about, just our own South 32 commitment.
Okay, thank you.
It's not included in this land agreement.
And then Mr. Reese, if I could just, I mean, there is the county standard indemnification and insurance language in the agreement. So, I mean, that is clearly stated in the agreement.
So there, so there is.
Book and review.
There is, we have looked at whatever the liability.
Of course, yes, sir.
There's the indemnification that's been put in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hope that answers your question there. Ma'am, please.
Valerie Neal, Red Rock Acres, Patagonia. I just had a quick question about the permitting. I understand that you're saying that the permits would be the same whether the, the county accepts the donation or not. My understanding is that some of those properties, or that all of the properties that you've bought are subject to, and I can't remember the, the number, uh, but the kind of lot that they are, requires those lots to be at least five acres in size. Some of those lots, particularly the smaller ones down near Red Cloud Lane, will be subdivided, I don't think subdivided is the correct word, but they will be divided by the road. Wouldn't that require further permitting and division requirements if you were doing it privately? And that that, um, by donating it to the county, you are then not subject to those division rules?
Yeah, I'm not, I just don't want to.
Jennifer, or Valerie?
So, if, if it's contiguous to the mine, it's not subject to the zoning properties?
So as long as it's contiguous to their property?
Contiguous to the property. It's not subject to the zoning requirements.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
No, so if they were doing it as a private road, and they're, and they're bisecting a property that is six acres in size, and thereby creating two properties that are three acres in size, isn't that going against the, um, uh, the general rules of the, of the, of the, of those properties?
That'd be a question for our Community Development Director.
Frank, if you come up here, please.
Sure. Thank you.
Want to sit at the table, or do you want to?
Okay, so typically, the zoning exemptions apply to mine when it's five or more contiguous acres. With respect to the development of a road in a park, the zoning requirements don't apply. It's not, it, but, for example, if there was a case where there was going to be an off-site development or something like that, zoning requirements, as far as my understanding of the statutes going again, we would have to do more research with our attorneys, would apply. If, for example, the mine was going to develop off-site uses that were not part of the five or more contiguous acres of their operations. So in this case, with respect to infrastructure development, though, the zoning doesn't apply to the particular use.
Carolyn, ask your question, please.
Could you state his name?
My name's, oh, my name's Frank Dillon. Sure thing.
Well, Frank, before you leave the table, my name's Carolyn Schaefer from Patagonia.
Hi, Carolyn.
And, yes, hello. And I want to address specifically what you were saying, because I believe you are referencing ARS 11-812, which does specifically speak about the county not having regulatory zoning and whatever, uh, over mining property of more than five acres. However, I refer you to ARS 27-301, which goes into further definitions of mining property, and those definitions speak about actual mining operation, not just property that mines happen to own.
Okay, Carolyn, and thank you for pointing that out. Again, we'll defer to our attorneys to look into those statutory items a little bit further.
Any other questions? If not, then we're going to go ahead and start the process. Just to remind you, three minutes at the podium. Identify yourself.
Can we speak from the?
Oh, questions from Zoomland.
Oh, is there a question from Zoomland? If you identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Ron Polium in Patagonia. Sorry, I couldn't make it in person this morning. I just have a question about, again, the temporary nature of the road. We keep hearing that, um, it'd be two months after approval of the alternative route through Flux Canyon, that the park could be, um, that the road could be decommissioned and a park started. Is there any assurance, um, that the, uh, road will not be there for at least 30 years? As I read all the agreements, um, it seems very likely the road will be there for 30 years, because it'll be so difficult to get approval through the Flux Canyon Road. So the question is, can we be assured this road will not be used for 30 years before a park could be established?
Thank you, Rod. Rod, Valerie, anyone want to answer that? And then, ma'am, if you have a question, if you get up there, let them answer, and then you can ask your question. Go ahead.
I think what you're referring to is in the agreement, it's 24 months after receiving approval for a, for service land road. I, I think beyond that, you know, the assurance is written into the agreement as best as we can, and then also the design of the road, with it being kind of that temporary design, it's not, it won't withstand traffic for 30 years.
Good. Please state your name.
Doesn't the agreement give?
What's that?
The mine the right to be there for 30 years?
Okay, so, what was your question, Ron? You were all, I couldn't hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, he's done. Ma'am?
Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Klingenstein from Patagonia. And Melanie referenced the existence of a preliminary traffic impact analysis, and I'm wondering if the county has seen that, and also if that's available to the public?
It's not available, oops, excuse me, it's not available to the public yet. We're in the process of updating it with some information that came out of the pre-feasibility study. We're updating the volumes and some of that information, so we can share it once it becomes available.
So has, so has the county received any estimates of traffic volumes and traffic impacts to this point?
The traffic volumes that we shared last week during the study session.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Which were the same ones in the pre-feasibility study?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, if you come up and.
This is just a quick follow-up on the indemnification issue. So number seven, somewhere in here, um, the agreement. "Granter shall defend, indemnify, and hold grantee harmless from and against any liability, loss, cost, damage, or claim arising as a result of the acts or culpable omissions by Granter or its agents and, or assignees pursuant to its rights and reserved herein, or their use and operations within and about the temporary easement area." Does that refer just to the, the road?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not comfortable answering any insurance-type questions. I'm not an attorney, and it's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, so.
Well, I guess the question would be if, if the, the AMI gave the surrounding land to the county, and it's only covers the road, which it says temporary easement area, then that relieves AMI of any liability that, of issues that might happen among bikers, children, and other picnickers around the road? So I'm just wondering what that really refers to.
I'm not an attorney either, but public safety is a priority for South 32, and we will take measures to ensure public safety, and there are things that we can do, um, along the road to improve safety.
And, and just, look, we're, we're taking all these comments, and I know that, I want to hear what else needs to be said. Once and if the agreement is approved, uh, we will make sure that many of those questions are, are answered. So right now, we're taking the comments, we're looking at some of the issues that are being brought up here as to liability, as to, is the road going to be there 30 years? Those are things that we will, uh, we will probably go into executive session, because that is the only way that, that we can have our attorneys give us the legal advice as how to proceed. However, once everything has been agreed upon to, and this board decides to act, at the moment that any agreement is approved or not approved, it becomes part of the public domain, it becomes an open document. So, uh, so we'll take all these questions when we go into executive session. And I assure you that one of the reasons we're having this second was to make sure that things were clarified. I was glad to see that, uh, we were asked about the Pat Reisner letter, that those questions have been answered. I've seen the response that was sent to us, and now posted on the AMI website, and I believe we're going to probably post them on our website, too. It's already posted. So those things have been taken care of, and that came out of last week's meeting. So, uh, we'll go ahead now, then, and, and proceed with the comments in the study session. Remember, please, three minutes. No cheering or jerrying. And we will move forward, we will take notes, and then we will take care of that. So Carolyn, you're first. And I think you're twice on here, but.
Well, that happened because.
You're only going to speak once, so you only get three minutes, so.
Okay. Drat, that plan worked, didn't work.
Oh?
Well, greetings all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, speak once. I am Carolyn Schaefer, a taxpaying resident and voter, living in or near Patagonia for 26 years. Today, I speak as a private citizen who has read the draft agreement and deed. In addition to my March 30 comments, today I raise the following concerns about this proposed land donation. The documents refer to this as a low-volume local rural road. The intended use of this road by AMI is not typical low-volume local rural road traffic. Will this be a private road or a public road? The term of this temporary easement is somewhere between two years and in perpetuity, based on the deed language that states, "shall run for a period of 30 years from the date hereof, after which time they shall be extended for successive periods of 10 years each," end quote. The county is well aware that the town of Patagonia has a flood and flow committee that should be consulted about any flood control management proposals for this property. Was the consult with the Tribal Historic Preservation Office of the Toona Odom Nation about the entire land parcel, or just the easement area? At 7:36 PM last night, South 32 responded to the March 21 citizens' letter that was referred to at the March 30 study session, and which the chairman just referred to. No action should be taken until ample time is allowed for the county and the voters of this county to study and react to South 32's answers. Please do not ignore your voters and rush through a decision that many people do not believe is the best interest of the residents of Santa Cruz County. We are at a choice point, and we, the people, ask you, our elected officials, to please slow down and listen to the people's opinion on the future of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Alex Noden?
Thank you. My name is Alex Noden. I'm here from Patagonia to speak specifically to some points on the agreement and on the deed. It seems to me that we have to take some careful time to consider these things. If even I, as an ordinary citizen, can look through and see some of these issues, it seems like our very smart county attorneys can also look at what I hope is only a first draft, and, and come up with something a little bit better than this. I have five points. One of them has already been touched on, which is, how temporary is this easement? Are we running into a rule against perpetuities question? I mean, as far as I can tell, it's perpetual. We've got to really, really be careful and think about how long this, this road is going to be there, and not some imaginary timeframe when it's going to stop. My second point is that neither the length of time, nor the specific amount, nor even an exact formula for determining the, the fiscal support for this park is, is set forth in that agreement. It has some vague language that it will depend upon how much is spent by the county in other areas, but there's not a specific amount, nor a specific time. And my suggestion is, if the mine is so convinced that they would like to support this, why don't they support it by giving an endowment to the county of a certain amount of money? Then you know how much there is, and you can manage it yourselves, and not have to worry about what happens, you know, when AMI ceases operations or abandons the road. My third point is that if South 32 waits for the full 30 days, which is permitted under the agreement, to offer the exact specifications of this road and where it is, the supervisors only have 15 days after that to determine whether they want to accept this. And that is a pretty short period of time, without specific traffic studies, without engineering studies, without safety studies, to try to determine whether that's a good idea or not. That is way too fast for you or anyone to make a really good decision about this. The third thing, fourth thing that I want to say is that the deed prohibits the county from ever, 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 this is a condition that lasts forever, as it's currently written, from using this land for anything else. At a minimum, that restriction ought to end when the county, when the AMI abandons the road. And thereafter, the county should be able to do anything it wants with that property, maybe even eventually get it back on the tax rolls. That might be a good idea. And the third, or the fifth thing is the easement and the, is it non-exclusive, which means the public is going to be traveling over this road, presumably, that's the only way we have to get into the park. And if you look carefully at the way that they've written that indemnification, the only thing the mine indemnifies the supervisors and the county for is anything that happens as a result of their use, and not everybody else. That's a big gap, and I think it ought to be addressed. So I refer that to our very intelligent, uh, county attorneys.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Gamaliel Leiva?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you very much for having me and this opportunity to, uh, to speak in front of you guys, and I'm pretty nervous. I'm not a good, uh, public speaker. But, uh, thank you for what all this work, I mean, you guys doing, and it's, it's a hard, a hardship to do it. I'm speaking spec, especially to the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, and I, I read, uh, I write this thing, because I will forget all my, my three, four points. Members of the county residents, uh, thank you for this, uh, chance to express my concern. I am, my name is Gamaliel Leiva. My wife, Jan Herron, a resident of Patagonia, taxpayer and voter of this county. I'm a retired, semi-retired home inspector and a U.S. Armed Forces veteran. We moved to this area, town of Patagonia, about 10 years this summer, to live and enjoy this nature jewel of this biodiversity ecosystems of the Skye Island. But the three or more generations behind, or back, my ancestors reside in this general area, way before La Linea and Ambos Nogales, uh, were, were divided by a wall. And most probably, some of that DNA traces that are buried in this general area that we're talking about, they are probably are my ancestors or you guys' ancestor. We probably related somehow. And I come back to this, to start all over again. You never know. I'm expressing my concern about the impact of this road park adjacent to the, our Red Rock Acres property. Friends and residents, close neighbors right here. We live, live among ourselves like, uh, supervisor breakers say, what, why we don't work together as a neighbor with the mine and all. Well, this proposed park, AMI is concerned to accept, you guys, to accept this 136 acres land for a park. I asking you, what is the hurry, to rush? I asking you, what is the hurry to rush and the board of supervisor to accept this proposal? Like, they are putting and speaking very well, better than me, very articulated, because after accepting, signing this proposal, it stopped the property tax revenue almost $8,000 per year and tax revenue 7,800 to be exact, and it started to be a deficit expense, cost us taxpayers more money to maintain, to man it, upkeep and repair the park. Ah, and it's a big old broad unpaved industrial road in the middle of this park.
Mr. Leiva, your time has expired, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Kat Crockett?
Just to articulate my points, I brought to you a map right out of the agreement for initial awareness. And I just have one procedural question before I get started. I've got like two or three questions, and that's what I'm here for, is to get more information. If I ask the question, can we stop the clock for the response?
No, that's, that's why we, we ask people for questions, not fair to anyone else, Ms. Crockett. So, ask your questions, and at the end, we may be able to, to answer them for you before we go into executive session. Is that fine?
Thank you. Okay. My name is Kat Crockett. Um, I'm a resident of Elgin, and I have a few comments and questions here. And mainly, they pertain to the agreement, page two, paragraph four. There's a couple of terms in there I don't understand. The AMIs, um, indicates the non-exclusive temporary use of low-volume rural road for ingress and egress between Harsaw Road and 82. Um, I don't think it's going to be low volume. I think it's going to be very high volume, and especially during the construction period where so many materials and supplies and vehicles will be accessing or ingress and egress that particular road. The land road, the, the land this road travels through is residential, agricultural, general rural, if I understand, but I'd like more information on if you construct an industrial road in this rural area near these residents, what are those requirements? But I'll move on. Second, this comment on page two characterizes timber or uses the term temporary use. And I really believe that I hear a lot from the mine about intent and objectives and desires, and that's normal in the planning stages of something this big. But I really think their key thing is get that ore to market and get it there the cheapest way possible. And once this road is in, I'm speculating, going to go down 82, probably to 90, down to I-10 and into the railhead. And what that's, once that's up and running, unlikely they will deviate and invest more money in other roads. But temporary use is of concern. Um, the park, you know, if you look at the park, the road cuts through this area on the map that I gave you such that anything to the west of this industrial park would be, or, or road would be probably not usable at all. That only leaves a little bit more area for a park. But I will ask you, is a park feasible at all? The road will carry heavy equipment, vehicles or trucks, a large volume, creating loud noise, vibration, emissions, dust, potential for the grounds and surrounding area to be damaged by contaminants, and as a wildlife corridor, the potential for dead or injured animals on there as well. But most importantly, what about the safety of people in this area with all that traffic? I don't think that's feasible. In summary, I urge the county not to enter into this agreement, allow South 32 to exercise their due diligence with their own property, and do not place a park that no one wants in an area that's not feasible. Thank you. Oh, good timing. That was hard.
Anita Kay?
Hello, Anita Stevens-K, Sonoyta. I have two issues with this right now. I, I'm obviously feeling for the people of Patagonia that are, that are caught with this temporary road. Dude, when is a road ever temporary? It goes from a goat trail to a dirt road, and then furthermore, you know, and then it's Broadway Boulevard. Y'all are joking yourselves who think the road's going away. Then you get it out to 82. Okay? What is 82? 82, scenic highway, bicyclists, wine tourists. Okay, then you go what, down here to Nogales? Hopefully, because this is the industrial corridor, but it seems like I'm hearing a lot of noise about this coming through Sonoytatown. Sonoytatown, where y'all just gave another liquor license. More hard alcohol flowing through there, more wineries, more tourists, more and more and more. I'm hearing 80 loads a day? 80 loads a day? That's like a, that is a truck going through Sonoyta every six minutes. And this is not like a sanitary semi coming through with goods. It is a ore truck that is having stuff spilling out, like gravel, ripping up our roads, being hazardous to, to the people. Now, y'all go down I-19, and maybe once in a while, you come up 80, 82 to Sonoyta, but after you get to Sonoyta, there are no shoulders. There's nothing. If you go down towards Sierra Vista on 82, you get through those bends. You know what the trucks do? About once every six months, a truck wipes out, and we have to put the guardrails up again, because there shouldn't even be any regular semis on 82 going between Nogales and Highway 90. But now you want to put ore trucks on there. Okay, so they're not going to go Highway 90, then they're going to go up 83? Hell, when's the last time y'all bent up 83? Okay? Seriously now. 83 is a commuter road. There's wine traffic, there's residents going up and down, and then you have the border patrol agents that have just gotten off shift that take that road at 85 miles an hour the whole way. Okay, put in there groups of random bicyclists that usually don't bicycle anywhere until they come down here and start drinking. Really, people, think about what you're doing here. This is toxic. You guys treat Sonoyta like, oh, let's put a Dollar General in where we're trying to grow the wine industry. Okay, why don't we just put a barefoot tasting room in there? You guys need to understand, you are in control of Sonoyta, we are not. We don't have a town. We rely on you to help us be successful. And this road coming into our town is a recipe for mayhem disaster, and I'm sorry, somebody is going to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Michael Stabill and Mr. Vice Mayor, I know you said self, but you can't take your hat off when you... And that's fine, sir. Please.
Thank you. I am Michael Stabill, living in Patagonia, and I am talking for myself, not the town of Patagonia. I have a couple of points. I'm asking the supervisors to incorporate into their agreement with South 32 that no haul trucks ever be allowed to turn left on Highway 82 towards Patagonia under any circumstances. Sorry, Anita.
That's all right.
And then in order to, to, to put to rest this, this road that goes on into perpetuity, please put a maximum, a maximum amount of years, 15 years at the most. And finally, I highly recommend to South 32 to apply for your NEPA permit with the Forest Service now. Please do not continue to delay your application. NEPA is a long process. You will be required to do an EIS, which alone will take over two years. If you gain approval for the road construction, it will also take many years. Getting approval for your exit out the back is the only way the local citizens will believe that the Cross Creek Connector is truly temporary. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Marian Vandy Tavoli? Did I get that right, or?
Every time gets a little closer.
Okay.
Just keep having me.
Hey, Marian, practice makes perfect, I guess. One of these days.
Good morning. I'm Marian Venditouli. I'm a resident of Elgin, the editor of the Patagonia Regional Times. We're a nonprofit news organization that covers eastern Santa Cruz County. We cover Sonoyta, Elgin, Canelo and Patagonia. Our monthly print edition has over 4,000 readers. We have at last count 1,901 subscribers to our weekly e-newsletter, and our website has an average of 4,000 visits a month. All those people, at this moment, the issue before you is the most closely watched and the one that we are receiving the most comments on. So, I'm here to get answers to the questions that the PRT's been asked repeatedly. At the last study session, Mr. Ruiz used the word transparency. You want us to be transparent? I'll be transparent, you said. I believe he's being sincere, and we can work together to get answers to these questions and to all the other questions that have been raised here today. So, I'm going to list three questions that I'm asked the most and that I actually am curious about. The first one is, what in this deal benefits the county? I've, I've had several people approach me and email me asking that question, and I don't have an answer. There's been no need demonstrated, and there is zero desire expressed for a third park in Patagonia. A park with a commercial road running through it makes no sense to many of the people that have commented to me as well. Patagonia is surrounded by unlimited opportunities for outdoor recreation. Hiking trails, biking trails, riding trails, bird watching, camping spots, picnic spots, the Arizona Trail, which goes pretty close to this property. It doesn't really resonate with anyone to have a park there, and I haven't heard anybody discuss that at all. The land would be off the tax rolls, as, I don't even remember who said that. Oh, Ghana said that, yeah. My property assessment this year, to make this personal, went up more than 20% this year, and so, so did many of my neighbors. I don't know what the incentive is to take that, that, that property off the tax rolls. So, that's my first question to you. Oh, my God, I'm done. Why does South 32 want to do this? Pardon my readers if they're somewhat skeptical of claims about the desire to preserve open space on the part of the mining company. So, what is South 32 getting in return for this deal? What are the potential benefits to South 32? And the last question would be, if the county doesn't accept this land donation, what are the specific impacts on, on the Cross Creek Connector? Oh, my God, there's four seconds left. That's great.
Thank you.
Bam, yeah. But these are important questions that we're seeking answers to.
Thank you. So, Chuck Klingenstein, or is it Klegenstein?
Beautiful, the first time.
I'm getting better.
Taking a deep breath here. Chuck Klingenstein, Patagonia resident and county voter. ARS 12-820.03 is my continuing message. Melanie, thank you for the letter last night. Supervisors, you are enabling an industrial road. The traffic volumes for construction and production require adequate sightline distances, traffic controls, queuing lanes, acceleration, de-acceleration lanes and more. Our attention has been on 80 one-way ore concentrate truck trips and that they may be electric, but they are really missing, we are missing, the big picture. Where's the traffic impact analysis? What do we have? South 32's economic report showing each shift's potential trip generation caused by 702 jobs during construction and 625 jobs during operations. Even if South 32's employment traffic is whittled down by daily shift change buses, these numbers do not account for the additional trips generated by subcontractors, service vendors, suppliers and materials, chemicals and other deliveries and takeaways. These trucks will likely be gas or diesel. They produce noise, air pollution, dust, vibration and other impacts, and these will be 24/7. Further understanding the magnitude of traffic generation, $1.7 billion of additional capital investment or $340 million for five years. A further indication of personnel, equipment, supplies and materials often hazardous. All of this concerns me. Having a no project, project traffic impact analysis, I look for one. Resolution copper. An underground mine retrofitted with shafts up to 7,000 feet deep. The 2,700-page January 1st, 2021 EIS has six volumes full of sobering information and traffic as mentioned 464 times. Table 3.5-4-2, site-generated trips, shows the total number of trips. 1,618 daily employee trips construction, 750 daily employee trips operations, up to 30 material and equipment trucks per hour during construction, up to 25 material equipment trucks per hour during operation. In closing, you have an MOU that's about cooperation. Has South 32 cooperated and shared the traffic impact analysis? Do you really know what's needed for mitigation? Make sure you get the information. Only then you can understand your decision's ramifications. You should slow down. As the U.S. President once said, "Trust but verify." And you have not verified. You are putting yourselves and the county and your constituents on the hook for things we're not prepared for.
Thank you, Chuck. Sarah Klingenstein, here next.
Thank you very much. Over the years, I, I have watched development of many types be approved over the concerns and objections of citizens, with the developer claiming to be sensitive to those concerns and proposing mitigations. We've heard many of those proposed mitigations today. And time and again, what I have found is that either those mitigations do not happen or often those mitigations do very little to lessen the impacts that are experienced by residents. There are so many impacts that will be associated with the approval of this industrial road. There are at least seven types of heavy equipment used for surface and underground mining. These pieces of equipment will need to be transported to the site, and many will traverse our roads. How much will mitigation that is possible be effective and matter to the residents? There will be construction phase heavy and light equipment. How much of that can be mitigated? Commuter buses, approximately 20 per day, either on this road or through Patagonia, no one knows. But how much will mitigation of this matter to the experience of residents? Ore concentration truck traffic alone would be at peak up to 170 truck trips per day, over seven trucks per hour on average. How can that be mitigated for the experience of residents? Low-volume local rural road feels like a term used to placate the public and to make the decision makers feel better about a bad decision. Contrary to this proposed agreement, also, the proposed uses of the, of the land, including a park, are absolutely at odds with any conception of park. It is a euphemism, and in my experience, it is probably also being proposed to placate. The EIS that Chuck Klingenstein shared cited the following concerns for resolution copper that certainly will apply for us, and these issues can only be mitigated to a minor degree. Dangers to wildlife, disruption of habitat, disruption of, of migration patterns, light, noise, air pollution, public safety and health, physical safety and the health of residents, and the overburdening of our small rural EMS fire system. Will we need hazmat services once this is started? As citizen representatives, well, and, and also, I wanted to mention the tourist, the nature-based tourist economy, which will certainly decrease. That cannot be mitigated to a degree that will be satisfactory to the residents of this area. So, as our representatives, I ask you to get the answers that we are talking about to your satisfaction, to our satisfaction. Be rigorous and specific in your protection of us as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Register?
Vanessa Register, 105 Lado de Loma. A passive park is what is being proposed, a plot of land that is landscaped and maintained as an open space. It serves a neighborhood. How does it serve a neighborhood? It serves as a gathering place for relaxation and play. Permitted features, walking past, sitting areas of land and natural areas, must include native plants and a place for wildlife habitat. Passive park definition, passive park is a non-motorized activity that offers constructive, which means it's a benefit, restorative and pleasurable human benefits, and fosters appreciation for understanding and open space. Non-motorized. In the MOU, page two, number four, 191 in your packet, it says, "The road..." In the MOU, page 2, number 4, 191 in your packet, it says, "The road. AMI sole costs and expense including making a non-exclusive temporary use of a limited area of the property for design, construction, and maintenance of a low-volume local rural road for ingress and egress between Herschaw Road and SR 82." Non-exclusive. No one can say how many trucks are going to be used. It's a public road and there's other businesses that will be taking it because people and businesses or other mines can use this road. The claim that only electric trucks will be on there can no longer be claimed. Low-volume. A road. A DOT says that less than 400 trips per day, 400 trucks, electric, non-electric, and other vehicles, is not a low volume or consistent with a passive park. My next point. On page 2, number 4, it says, this is your part. The county acknowledges and agrees that MIA reserve temporary easement is not inconsistent with the park's purposes. A 20-year with a 10-year extension, non-exclusive, low-volume, less than 400 vehicles, is not consistent with a non-motorized gathering place for relaxation and play. The zoning for these lots, GR, general rule, the purpose of general rule is to accommodate residents of 180,000 square feet. A style of rural nature with accommodations for animals and agriculture is the intent of this district. Any use not permitted or permitted with a CUP is prohibited. I can't find a temporary low-volume, non-exclusive road permitted in this zoning. Sufficient protection for the people of Santa Cruz County has not been established through this MOU. The volume of vehicles is not limited. The definition of low-volume road prevents this. Non-exclusive says you cannot say who uses this road, how many trips, and the types of vehicles are the time of day. Or the stacking of vehicles on 82 with limited line of sight is not safe for ingress and egress. Please add this to your thoughts when making this decision. I'm turning a copy of these comments to be put into the full minutes meetings as allowed by state law.
Thank you, Ms. Register. Lynn Davidson.
Thank you, Chairman Ruiz and other supervisors. My name is Lynn Davidson. I live in Patagonia. I own a home there, pay taxes, vote in Santa Cruz County. I was at the last study session on the 30th and was surprised that South 32's presentation included a economic contribution study that they've just completed. I was surprised because really this was a meeting about the park and the road. But since that was opened as part of this conversation, I'd like to provide some context for you as commissioners. So you have heard that a recent study was done on the nature-based restorative economy. I urge you to have a presentation by the University of Arizona who did that study and get a little context for the numbers that were presented in the economic study that this mine did. It's pretty interesting when you look at projections that are done by the mine for marketing purposes, clearly for marketing purposes. It makes sense that it would be for marketing purposes versus real data that was analyzed by the University of Arizona. I really urge you, you are basing a lot of decisions on projections and those projections change daily, weekly, monthly. I feel strongly that the nature-based restorative economy and what you'll hear from the University of Arizona will give you some information that may cause you to think a little more about the economic numbers that the mine has provided. For example, the UVA found that the nature-based restorative economy is a significant contributor to the local economy and the fastest-growing part of that economy over the 10-year period of 2010 to 2019, growing 30%. When you come to Patagonia, and you will have an invitation soon to do so, very soon, you'll see that it's growing even faster now. Unlike mining, there are very few costs to the county for the nature-based restorative economy, making the contributions more valuable. If the Hermosa Mine is developed and operated as being presented by South 32, it will have a chilling effect on that nature-based restorative economy.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson.
Thank you. I'll leave my full comments here.
Linda Shore.
I'm Linda Shore. I'm from Patagonia and I'm here wearing the hat of the president of the Sky Islands Tourism Association. We're a group that represents 65 businesses in Patagonia, Sonora, and Elgin. It's pretty obvious to me that it's one thing for all of us to come in here and tell you what our issues and concerns are about the industrialized road that we'll be going through. It'll be a completely different situation if you could come out and see the issues and concerns we're talking about for yourselves. So that's why I'm here, thank you, Lynn, as the official, I guess I'm the party planner? I'm not sure. I have an invitation for all of the supervisors, any of you who are interested and involved in making this decision, to come to Patagonia to see for yourself what's going on. And I'm making that request of you for two reasons. Number one, you need to get to walk the Cross Creek Connector route yourselves so that you can look at it through the eyes of the residents like Gama and some of the other people have talked to you. Secondly, I want you to come and listen to some of our members, the business owners I'm talking about. They're very concerned about what the impact will be on their revenue stream if, number one, the road goes through, and then, secondly, at a higher level, if the mine goes through, period. In terms of those 65 businesses I'm speaking for, 64 of them are actually involved in the restorative, nature-based restorative economy that Lynn referred to. They are people that buy and sell their goods to tourists. Those tourists all travel Highway 82 and 83, which means traffic and safety are at the top of their list. There are also people who, I guess I'm fond of saying, get their hands dirty. They are involved in the work with the ground, like Kat is with her winery. And so for them, water, quantity, and quality are issues. Those are both things that you need to hear from the business owners to factor them into what's going to be the decision you're going to be making. As I said, I've got details of the invitation here. We would like it to occur within the next month. It definitely needs to occur before you make a decision. I'm one of the business owners who it will be impacted and I hope you will take advantage of the opportunity to join us in Patagonia. We'll buy you lunch. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As I mentioned before, I live on Cross Creek Road. I think there are only two of us left, actually. There were six households along Cross Creek Road. Four were given offers that, of course, they could not refuse, far, far, far above market rates for their land in order to create maybe a park. I have tremendous concern about this. I want to mention a couple of other things, though, before I forget. One is that the nature-based restorative economy study, the study that was mentioned last week as having been paid for by the mine, was not paid for by the mine. It had paid $500. So did I and my wife. So did 19 other parties. So that's important. That's number one. Number two, the question of why now? Should the county enter into this agreement? With all due respect to the gentleman, Mr. Lane, what I've heard is that if we don't do that now, then they can't get started. That they can't, so if we don't enter into it, they can't get started with their project. Is that really in the best interest of the county? When I Google "South 32" and Colombia, or Australia, or South Africa, I see a lot about promises made to local communities and a lot about enormous damage done. And I urge you to Google those search terms. In Sydney, Australia, South 32 offered $100 million to compensate for the water that they were going to be using in their coal mining in the Sydney Catchment area. We are not being offered anything for the hundreds of millions of gallons of water and acre-feet of water. One one-thousandth of all of the aquifer underneath the city of Phoenix is equal to the water that will be used during the life of this project. If you do the math, that's a huge, huge amount of water. There are 5 million people in the Phoenix area. One one-thousandth of their water is going to be used, wasted here. The word is that it will be sinking, it'll be sinking down into the aquifer, but that's highly, highly unlikely, as hydrologists will tell you, in a rapid-flow situation through the creek down to the river. So the amount of water that's going to be replenished is very questionable. So I have tremendous concern about this. I'm also concerned about the parcels in the northeast area that you purchased and whether those will be used for staging areas or parking lots.
Thank you, Dr. Cornton. Maggie Ergo.
I'm lucky, I've been up here several times today. I would like to recite an old adage, "Things are never what they seem. Skim milk masquerades as cream," which I think is highly applicable here. It's pretty obvious, nobody cares about a park. I mean, literally, there's no purpose to this at all. However, there must be a purpose that AMI has. I would like to know what that is. I'm not sure AMI has actually been transparent about this. I found it particularly interesting when I raised the question of this being designated, this road. Everybody cares about the road, that's the issue. The park is irrelevant. When I raised the question of mine hall road designation, the AMI representative said, "Oh, no, this wouldn't be a mine hall road." Well, I have a question that I would like her to speak to and I'm hoping also that you folks on the board here really look deeply into this designation question because it speaks to exactly who's going to regulate this road. Who's going to say what the speed limit is on this road? ADOT in the county or either federal regulations if this is designated as a mine hall road? A truck going 10 miles an hour generates a lot less dust than a truck going 40. So I would like to see if this issue of who designates this as a mine hall road versus who is going to regulate this road. If, for example, do federal regulations require monitoring of particulates? What kind of monitoring? Would the county require that on this road? Would ADOT? So I think there are some extremely important legal questions here that need to be dug into very carefully. And I hope that you folks will use the timeline of the people of the area and Santa Cruz County to make this decision and not AMI's timeline because there are many other businesses. It would be very wrong to privilege one business's concerns and issues over other businesses. You shouldn't be in the business of choosing winners and losers among businesses. Thank you very much.
This is available for anyone in general, if you would be interested in hearing.
David Crest.
I'm David Crest, Patagonia. I'm here to address what brings us together, what is common for everyone in this room and everyone in the world. And that is that we all seek peace of mind. I mean, that's an obvious, that's a given. This, in fact, does bring us together, no matter what side we're on. Also, that we all know, we all know what is being done and what is being proposed to being done to, well, to our mother earth is an added stress to an already compromised earth. We all know this. Whether we justify the need for this or that, we all know that it's added stress and destruction to our mother earth and all of we creatures, including we human beings, animals, plants, This is our wake-up call.
Thank you, sir. Judith Clegg.
My name is Judith Clegg. I am a Patagonia homeowner, taxpayer, voter in Santa Cruz County, and I'm here to talk about the donation of a park by South 32. It was surprising to learn in the draft agreement that South 32 is proposing to donate a park to Santa Cruz County that will be dominated by an industrial road constructed and used at full production by 80 tractor-trailers, trucks, traveling per day on the road 24/7, 24 hours a day, 160 trips round, 160 round trips. Those vehicles, plus other mine-related traffic, will have use of the road for at least 30 years with options for longer. Who would use such a park when the trucks are rolling? How could it be safe? It was also surprising to hear that there was community support for the proposed park, particularly since less than a mile to the south is the well-loved Patagonia town park, less than a mile to the north is the two-mile loop trail open to the public for hiking, birding, other wildlife viewing within the Borderlands Wildlife Preserve. And also, less than one mile to the north is an access point to the Arizona Trail, which traverses the length of the state and welcomes of the state and welcomes hikers, mountain bikers, horses, and dogs. Within 10 miles, there's Patagonia Lake State Park. And throughout the broader area, there are many, many acres of National Forest Service lands that offer opportunities for hiking, biking, birding, hunting, and other outdoor uses. Is another park with an industrial road running right through it really a community priority? If the South 32 really wants to offer some level of reasonable compensation to the communities who would directly experience the substantial negative impacts of their mining operations, one step could be donations of other South 32 properties to the Cross Creek Corridor for true community priorities like these and others. To the town of Patagonia for affordable housing. To Santa Cruz County for conservation of undeveloped land to prevent further industrialization in the Cross Creek Corridor area by South 32, and to allow significant open space for water detention, detention and recharge, in consultation with the Patagonia Flood and Flow Committee. To the East Santa Cruz County Community Food Bank for permanent location for their operations. Santa Cruz County should be using its leverage to secure the best deal possible before facilitating the development of the Cross Creek Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clegg. Anne Huggins.
And everyone who left their mask up here. Okay, Lynn, one is yours. Who, just to clear out the area. Somebody else? These masks are supposed to be protective.
Okay. You yell your time. Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Valerie Neal.
Hi. My name is Valerie Neal. I'm a resident of Red Rock Acres in Patagonia and a voter in the county. In January 2022, South 32 released a summary of its pre-feasibility study of the Hermosa Project, in which it laid out projected costs of the project going forward. On January 17, 2022, South 32 held a conference call with various analysts and investment bankers to answer questions about the PFS summary. A recording of that conference call is available on the South 32 website. Graham Kerr, the CEO of South 32, and Pat Reisner took questions from eight individuals representing Goldman Sachs, Bank of America, Morgan Stanley, and other investment banks and analysts. Five of the eight speakers concentrated almost entirely on their concerns about the increased cost of the project, $1.2 billion to get it into production. South 32 responded with questions, to questions about the escalating projected expenditures, by explaining that the massive dewatering project that they are planning was an unforeseen expense, that they have to work on gaining efficiencies, and that they are much more bullish on the price of zinc than the rest of the market appears to be at this time. One speaker, Lynn Ballcock from Barren Joey, talking about the price of zinc, said, and I quote, "On face value, it's not economic anymore to do this project. If you still use what the market thinks is a dollar-a-pound zinc, this project does not work." I've heard what you said earlier, that you have very different views of the zinc market. So is it fair to say that for us to get comfortable with the new dynamics, we've got to move our thinking materially, like you have done? This call showed that based on the PFS summary, investment bankers and analysts had questions about the financial viability of this project. The company itself has not yet made a decision whether to move to the next phase of significant investment. And even though the price of zinc has increased substantially with the Russia-Ukraine conflict, market analysts such as Fitch Solutions expect zinc prices to drop again in 2023. My point here is simply to point out that everything at this point is highly conjectural. It is not a certainty that this project can go ahead in the manner projected by South 32. Everything is based on conjecture and estimates. I simply ask that the Board of Supervisors request more in the way of firm evidence from South 32, such as detailed traffic studies, feasibility studies, evidence of their work with ADOT and the 82 exit, before they go ahead and accept this donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Robin Kilburn, Kilbert.
Robin Kullbert, local voter, science teacher, permanent resident of Patagonia. Greetings all. I'm going to step back a little bit into a broader context. Let us not forget where we live. This is Sky Island country, the Madrian Archipelago, a region internationally recognized as a global biodiversity hotspot. We do not need a park on the backside of a hill bisected, no less, by an industrial road for the purpose of transporting ore off the mountain for the next half-century or further. We need instead to leave that ore in the ground. Consider Ecuador, a country roughly the size of Arizona, whose highest court ruled seven to two last December against proposed mining activities in the country's rainforest because such activities violate the rights of nature. This ruling was in accordance to the country's 2008 law, which afford nature, affords nature the highest form of legal protection. As one judge wrote for the majority, quote, "The risk in this case is not necessarily related to human beings, but to the extinction of species, the destruction of ecosystems, or the permanent alteration, alteration of natural cycles," end quote. I would like to suggest today that we are operating in the wrong paradigm. As the smallest county in a generally pro-mining state, we could be following Ecuador's lead and considering it our responsibility to preserve the unique ecological richness of this area, this jurisdiction. Some of us here today have made it their life's work. Yes, we need minerals for a post-fossil fuel era. But according to the USGS, as of 2017, only roughly a third of the available highly recyclable zinc, one of the minerals of AMI's tailored deposit was recycled. Thus, much of the supposed increase in demand could feasibly be supplied by greater recycling efforts. The same could be said for lead, silver, copper, and other minerals slated for extraction and export from the Patagonia Mountains. Metal recycling, as you know, requires much less energy and reduces the numerous environmental insults that mining inevitably entails. Circular economies, cradle-to-grave design, zero waste, these terms frequently used today all have one thing in common: mimicking Earth's fundamental cycling of matter. We need to increase our capacity for reuse and recycling, not blithely assume ore extraction is necessary, let alone desirable. Esteemed members of the board, you hold more leverage with more profound, long-term consequences that you might fully recognize. I urge you to consider this seemingly minor but unquestionably critical proposal within its larger ecological context.
Thank you. So that takes care of all the speaker slips here. We're going to go to Zoom now. The first one is Robert Gay. Are you on there, Robert?
Yes, I need to unmute. Am I audible?
Go, go ahead. Your three minutes are going to start when you start talking, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the three minutes. I will email what I've written. I have, let's see, worked. Let me back up a little bit. I've worked, raised kids, voted, and paid taxes in southern Arizona for 30 years, and in Patagonia for seven. I've been practicing architecture, studying ecology, making site plans and maps for 50 years. I love it here. I support all speakers challenging the hasty ram-rotting of this project and calling for deeper studies of impact. I have distilled my thoughts and feelings into five requests. I'm not sure I can get through all that in the three minutes, so I'm going to cancel the first three. I want to praise Valerie Neal and Robin Kullbert for upping the level of discussion. So we'll start with my request number four. I could email you all this, but request, so this becomes request number one. That is to always remember that we are in a climate of urgency. We're two years into what the United Nations calls the Code Red Decade, 2020 to 2030. That's a pretty short planning period. The United Nations challenges us to decarbonize the entire world at 50% of the prior output. Please, this actually tracks back to South 32's proposal. Please request the carbon footprint of this road project and every project they propose. The math is easy. You figure the fuel used by every project-related vehicle trip, and multiply it by the CO2 per gallon for each type of fuel. For diesel, it's about 22 and 1/2 pounds per gallon. So this is high school algebra. But the importance of mentioning the climate emergency is that our collective situation can be called decarbonized or die. So that's, that's one request. It's a request of you. It's a two-part. Request of you to remember climate emergency. Request of you also to ask for carbon footprint of any specific proposals made by any industrial entity in your county. Second request. It is vital to understand what a huge CO2 contributor of South 32 is, even as they brag about sustainability. Their involvement in coal in South 32, I'm sorry, their involvement in coal in New South Wales is South 32's largest contribution. And I'd like to spin that out a little bit, because I've been researching it. I don't have my PRT hat on, but I am a writer and photographer for Patagonia a recent time.
Mr. Gay, your time has expired. Thank you, and please email the rest of your comments, and we will incorporate them. Nisan O'Connor.
Yes, good morning. My name is Cornelia O'Connor. And, well, I guess I should say good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Reese and members of the board. I am opposed to this land donation, and you have heard many reasons against it. Particularly, and I think the two reasons that, that they suggested the county should accept it was, number one, for a park. As Judy Clegg pointed out, we have plenty of hiking areas in that, in that neck of the woods. I know that area very well, because it's just very close to where my home is. I've walked through it. It would not be a suitable park. We have all those parks and hiking trails in that area. The town would accept all the liability, and as Gama pointed out, they would, it would be taken off the tax, the tax rolls. The second reason to accept it would have been that they would build according to standards. Apparently, the South 32 would construct that road if they didn't take the donation, and they would still go with the same standards that need to be met. So I oppose it. I'm sure you've heard plenty of reasons against it. I think, as many others have mentioned, it's a, seems like a big rush. We're getting the information very late. There's no need to rush with this decision. I urge you to take your time and to listen to all the speakers today who, as myself, are opposed to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Ron? And I'm assuming it's Pullum?
Pulliam.
Pulliam. Ron, your three minutes when you start talking.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again. I'm a resident and voter and business owner in, in Patagonia. I think the bottom line I'd like to convey is, we're confused. We're confused about why the county would do this and why they would do it now. We see a clear benefit to South 32. There's no doubt that this will benefit them. And if this doesn't go through, that's not good for their stock prices. We don't see a benefit to the residents of our area. We don't see a benefit to the county. We certainly don't see a benefit to the wildlife, et cetera. But I simply want to point out that we have a, a growing and vibrant nature-based restoration economy that is in direct opposition to what this mine, mine would do, and this road will contribute directly to diminishing the value of what we've worked so hard for. When the road comes out onto Highway 82, you either turn left or you turn right. We've heard opposition already today to turning left going through the town. This is a town of, full of bikers, hikers, people who are enjoying themselves, and having truck volume through the, through the town is already bad and be, be worse. But if you turn the other way and you go north, you go through the Borderlands Wildlife Preserve, where we have 1,600 acres that we're protecting as a protected area for, for wildlife and a wildlife corridor. We heard the comment from the presenters that the reason that the county should take the ownership is that no land for the park would be made available if they don't, and that they would have a seat at the table. Those are the two comments that were made. Well, I tell you, we have rather than 134 acres, we have 1,600 acres that we're protecting just north of town, and I need to have a seat at the table. We would love to sit down with you, would like to show you what we're doing. We have trails, we have educational programs, we have outreach, conservation, watershed protection, and we're doing all the things now that are benefiting the community. We don't see any, any benefit from this 134 acres with an industrial road going through it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Todd Bowen? Are you there, Todd?
It's Bowden, right?
Todd Bowden?
Got my wrong list.
Are you there, Todd? Maybe he left. He did leave his email here. So we'll go to Quentin Luton. Quentin, are you there?
Yeah, he's there.
Okay. He hasn't started yet.
Now I need to unmute. Okay.
There you go. Okay, your time's starting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Quentin Luton, and my wife is Sandy McGreevy. I've lived in Patagonia for 10 years. We live in Sonoda, just, just north of the historical marker. We trade regularly in Patagonia. And I sent the Board of Supervisors each a, an email yesterday with some mitigation proposals for the temporary road. This Cross Creek Connector is not going to be a temporary road. Let me back up. I drove a truck for two, two and a half, three years. I was the driver, truck driver advocate for Citizens for Reliable and Safe Highways. We had offices in Washington DC and in San Francisco. They're, now jumping forward again, there is, this road is going to be a permanent road. I will read to you Mr. Reisner's response to a letter received last night. It says, "Referring to concentrate truck, concentrate truck traffic only, moving concentrate traffic east initially on State Route 82, then north on State Route 83 would result in an average of 4% increase in vehicles on the road." So is, the likelihood of their using Flux Canyon and building a road in there is remote at best. Well, it can be done with enough money, but it was, it's going to be highly disruptive, and it is highly unlikely. I think the county needs to take into consideration that this road is, that the Cross Creek Connector is going to be a permanent road. And a fact is that this road, as it is proposed right now at last week's study session, is wider than State Route 82 now. Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. I want to go back one more time. Todd Bowden, are you there?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, he said that he doesn't have audio capabilities, but he did provide his email address.
So is he going to email anything? Okay, perfect. So Christine Dollahan? Christine, are you there? She's still on there? Okay. Okay, your three minutes starts when you start talking. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Chris Dollahan. My husband, Tom Campbell, and I live in between Nogales and Patagonia. I'm making a comment that I tried to make earlier during the gen- along the Patagonia-Sonoyta scenic road, which consists of Route 82 and Route 83. In 2003, ADOT designated the Patagonia-Sonoyta scenic road and has proposed and published corridor management plans. And I have, there are many objectives in these plans, but there are two that I would ask the Board of Supervisors to consider before moving forward with this agreement. Under goal number four, transportation and public safety, objective one is to provide better safety conditions for bicyclists, pedestrians, and equestrians along the scenic road. Objective two is to reduce the number of through semi trucks and vehicles with wide loads traveling on the road. Is ADOT in agreement with the plan to increase rather than reduce the volume of large trucks traveling on Route 82 and 83, which, as you know, are two-lane highways, which have limited sightlines and few opportunities for passing? Even a few back-of-the-envelope calculations show that the addition of 160 only considering ore-carrying trucks per day will translate into 11,520 additional miles per day and more than 4 million miles per year that will be traveled on these roads, which are already experiencing notable increases in traffic, both motorized and non-motorized. I also wonder whether Pima County, through which Route 83 passes, is aware of and in agreement with the proposed increase in ore transport traffic, which doesn't even include the additional types of vehicles that have been mentioned today. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I certainly hope that the Board of Supervisors, in their difficult and challenging job with this, will take the time that's necessary to be sure that the traffic considerations, not just on the rural or mine-carrying road, but on our scenic highways, will also be considered before moving forward.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, so anyone else on Zoom World there? Okay. So that concludes the statements. I know, Melanie, there were some questions that were asked that I said we would defer to the end of the comments. I saw you writing them down, so hopefully you can answer those.
Yes, I tried to take good notes. Let's see here. A couple of the early questions, there was a question about involving the Tejano Odom Tribal Historic Preservation Officer. So we did Class 3 pedestrian surveys on all of our private land, not just the easement area. We will also use tribal monitors during construction of the road, and then we also have processes in place should anything be identified. There were also some questions regarding the amount of traffic. So I think, as I mentioned last meeting, we are trying to reduce the volume. We've talked about modular construction and trying to reduce, you know, by repackaging a different lay-down area so that we make less trips to site and have less vehicles on the road. Regarding the NEPA permitting process, we do intend to follow that process. It's a bit of a heavy lift to prepare all of the information to submit that, so, but we do intend to follow that process and permitting process for Flux Canyon Road. We are also pursuing the multimodal facility in Santa Cruz County and currently paying for the market analysis for that. There were some questions about dust, noise, vibration, and I think everyone's heard me say that we intend, or we're designing, you know, for electric vehicles, and that should reduce noise, vibration, emissions. I think another thing that came up that we can explore is the non-exclusive easement. Our intent is not to cut off access for anyone that has access to the area, but maybe there's something we can do to restrict certain areas so that it isn't a public thoroughfare. That's maybe something we can do some additional research on, but still allowing for some sort of access to the park on either end, and then also access for the residents in the area so that we don't cut off access to their property. I think that covers some of the questions. And then, of course, we have an email address. My personal email address is melanie.lawson@south32.net, or what might be easier is askhermosa@south32.net. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I have some closing comments from my colleagues. Bruce, Vice Chairman Brecker. There you go. I can't hear. Probably easier if you talk into the mic.
Looks if I turn it the right way. Once again, I just want to thank everybody for taking time to come out and participate in this public process. I think it's really important that this board hear from everybody, all parties, and we will continue to work on consideration of what we've heard today and come to a good decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Brecker. Supervisor Moletta?
As I mentioned earlier, again, I want to thank staff and Melanie for coming here and providing question and answer. There's a lot of really good feedback that we heard today. We really appreciate you all coming down here. Again, it's a process, and will be a continued process, and we appreciate all your input. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Moletta. I want to thank all of you that attended in person and all of those of you that are on Zoom World. You know, there's a lot of things that we've heard over these last two meetings, and I want to thank South 32, Rod, our staff, for putting together some of the information. I know that there have been presentations that really, at the end of the day, South 32 does not need to enter into an agreement with us to build the road. It's their property. All they would have to do would be take out the important applications just to go ahead and cover some of the flooding issues and some of those items that may impact. So that would be their only thing. I know it was mentioned that the county would lose $7,800 worth of property tax on those 134 acres. But on the other hand, if, depending how this whole thing works out at the end, if the South 32 does build and maintain that park, it would probably be more than $7,800 a year that the county taxpayers would save. So there's a lot of things that are going on here. There's a lot of moving parts. There's an old adage that says it's better to be at the table; if not, you become dinner. And many of the things that have been brought out today, I'm sure we will consider. By all means, we want to make sure that whatever decision that this board makes is in the best interest of all those concerned. At the end of the day, the state of Arizona is a very pro-business state, and, you know, they are a company that's on private land right now, and that's certainly their, you know, right to be able to go and use that without any really control by this county. I know water has been mentioned. I know pollution has been mentioned. There are a lot of things that are above our pay grade, and the reality of it is that we, as a board, have to deal with the cards that we've been dealt and how we work for the betterment of everyone. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for bringing them some issues. I know some of the statutes that were cited here, I know Kim was looking at them, and she'll give us information in executive session when we go into executive session here shortly. But like I said, it's just been very informative to see what's going on, and at the end of the day, we will try to do what is right for everyone, not just the county, but the members of the communities out in the outlying areas. With that, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our study session and reconvene regular session.
So moved.
Second discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convening to our regular session. We will move on to Item G, executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 and 4, discussion and consultation for legal advice and direction regarding the proposed deed and cooperative agreement with Arizona Minerals, Inc. to accept land donation from AMI for the purpose of providing a public park. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will now convene into executive session. So Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session, reconvene regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now reconvening to regular meeting, and I do hear a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting stands adjourned.